Good evening. Welcome. The morning's order, this meeting in the Congress Select Board on Monday, April 24th. I am his vice chair, Eric Holland. And, you have correct script. Article 11 question does not need to be called at all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, signed into law on March 3, 2023, which further extends its certain code of 19 measures regarding the current participation in public meetings until March 31st, 2025. Before we begin this again, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted in select board chambers and will resume. This room is being recorded, and someone can instantly watch how it's going to seem like. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may turn in information to do so on the conference call. Persons participating by the party either may be visible to others and if you wish, may be asked you to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Same is true for anyone in the public hearing chambers. Third, all participants are advised, people may be listening who do not provide comments, unless persons have had required to identify themselves. Both as in participants and persons watching an ACMI can follow the post agenda on the town's website specifically and select board agendas and minutes of late. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Speaking of which, this is the meeting, of course, prior to our first session of annual town meeting, when they were to be done before 8:00 PM, so that ACMI can hold the events. Also, as a note, after what's been getting to the article appearing, after Article 2, I would accuse myself, turning over to my vice chair, Mr. Hurd, our vice chair. Because I'm always blindflicking in the State Senate, I have to accuse myself of making matters that involve special legislation. So, at that point, Mr. Hurd would just carry the lead, or as I'll adjourn and announce the evolve downstairs. Any questions? Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Your motion. Right, questions are approved by Mr. Higgins, second by Mr. Hurd. Any discussion of questions? Hearing now, a motion by Mr. Higgins, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All voters say aye. Aye, opposed, if you may. I think, in retrospect, I will re-visit the agenda for the public's interpretation. We approve this, the meeting can take hold until 10:00. Rainbow Commission is going to be required celebration of Littlemore Park, 1017. Request for contract of the rain area of the grain layer license by Hercules, 183. Another request for the same by J. Coast Construction. Request for our Special One Bay Area One license, includes the Ellis School from the Anorashan. Request for temporary temporary extension for the Ellis and High School Junior Senior scholarships. Summer hospital series at Littlemore Park, Mary Mary. Our next item of business are two articles. This is for the embedded special town meeting that will be made in fifth, is that right, Ms. Maron?
There's that on the third.
Special Town Meeting, on the third, make it. So, persons of us tonight, if you're a select board here for the article presentation, to have a discussion with components, we will let each of the articles open up before the comments, each comment commiserant in the public, if you would be present in the State House on the town of the articles. At that point, we should have a discussion, and the board will vote a action. At that time, I think that, trying to tie, you probably cite us very carefully in the carefully constructed fill-in blank exercises made for us, and I will then produce a very severe case of record of a record of, so we can do anything. Mr. Hurd? Beginning the discussion, our first. All right. So, the first item in the article appearing is Article 2, vote for the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee, if you have a representative from the Town Meeting Procedures.
Christopher Moore, present 14, and member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. The Article 2 is a proposal to create a study committee to study the possibility of hybrid format town meeting. We're well aware that there's not clearly legislative authorization to even do that at this point, so one of the things the committee is going to have to look at is, what would it take legally? Also, what would it take technically? And, you know, what would be the reasons for doing it? What communities would be served by having easier time participating in town meeting? And, you know, what beneficial effects would we expect? And what detrimental effects might we expect? We carefully put together the motion that we suggested to the board, to not presuppose an outcome about what sort of recommendation the committee might make. The intention is also for this committee to live on, probably for a couple of years, to figure out all the stuff that needs to happen, and then to help with the implementation, much like the Electronic Voting Study Committee did.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. As well, just a little bit of a bit like here. Here's, all right. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. There was more than. It was a good one. I think, again, basically, I thought you picked out a couple of the other ones, so maybe you want to have a session of discussion. Mr. Hurd?
I'll move positive action. Look forward to the outcome study.
I'll take it now. One of the reasons that I have to do, to recuse myself of the next article, I happen to know that some fairly late-breaking news that hybrid town meetings are not specifically permitted. At least it will be three days. But I think that will be a really positive thing to study. I very much appreciate the model that you're proposing of intended group, but it'll fit these amounts and make sure we get it right.
Thank you.
At this point, I want to invite any public comments on the floor. And, checking from Ms. Maron, first check the room. And Ms. Maron, anybody raising their hands in, I guess I forgot to say the magic words. If you wish to publicly comment, please raise your hands, and give your moments to that.
Saying no, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Mr. Higgins, you said a brief question for Mr. Moore, and I'm just wondering, and I didn't answer, but you, this is after a request of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. Was this something that you felt that it needed just more direct attention, maybe more members, that it was something that you wouldn't want to handle just within the Procedures Committee itself?
Yes, I always thought that it really needed some direct attention from potentially a larger group than the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, which is five people, including the moderator, who has a big job. So, we thought it would be helpful to have a focused group on this.
Thank you. We've had no public comment, we've had a discussion, we've had a motion. Once again, by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Higgins, I sense a trend. All in motion to a favorable action, all in favor, by Chad Post. Thank you very much for your work, and look forward to the article.
Thank you.
At this point, I will turn the page over to Mr. Hurd as vice chair. Mr. Chair? Mr. Higgins, you just left records, left the time of the year. I'll recuse myself, and thank you, Mr. Higgins. See you downstairs.
Thank you all. See if I remember how to do this. Next article reviewing is our read special legislation for police recruitment and hiring civil service exemption for civil service. Mr. Higgins, can you go to present this article?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make some opening remarks, and then I would like to call on the police chief to offer her perspective. We also have, in addition to Chief Flaherty, our human resources director, Karen Malloy, to answer any questions. This is a piece of home rules legislation, or special legislation, that we would file with the general court, that would allow us to exempt from civil service procedures our hiring of police officers. Once those officers were hired and on staff, passed their probationary period, they would then have full civil service rights if they wanted to complain about how we were treating them, or their status, or promotions, or so forth. The reason that we are asking Town Meeting for this authority is that, like a lot of communities, we have found it's been getting more and more difficult to not only hire all sorts of staff, but in particular, it's getting harder and harder to hire police staff. We've noticed in other communities that are not in the civil service system, that they get many more applicants for their jobs than Arlington does. And so, we thought this would be a good step in the right direction. We had been talking with the unions about the possibility of exiting civil service entirely. That is somewhat a conversation that's going on in bargaining with them. So, instead of taking that full step at this point, we thought, let's just try to get us out of the hiring part, because I think everybody agrees, I don't want to speak for the unions, but I think everybody agrees that the civil service hiring process is not good for the town, and makes it difficult for us to hire qualified people. There are lots of details about how that works, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would respectfully request that the police chief be allowed to speak to this issue.
Chief Flaherty? Good evening. Chief Julie Flaherty. So, I don't think it's a secret that since I was appointed as chief, I have been exploring or looking at the idea of coming out of civil service for hiring, for many different reasons. But I think at this point, right now, we are entering into a hiring crisis. So, about 30 years ago, when I first came on and I sat down and took the civil service test, I was competing with over 300 other candidates for two or three positions, and that's just not happening anymore. We're not seeing people signing up to be police officers anymore at this point. Last month, civil service had an entry level exam, and they had nine people sign up for the test. I don't know how many people actually showed up to take the test, and I don't know how many people passed that test, because they won't have the scores back until September. Last March, we had, civil service had an entry level exam, and 16 people sat down and took that test. We just started bringing some people in to begin hiring police officers, and of those 16 people that we reached out to, only six came in and expressed interest in being a police officer. Of those six that we interviewed, we identified four qualified candidates who will move on in the process. And what we've seen in the past is, we give conditional office employment, we go through the whole process, and then the last portion of the process is a physical abilities test to get into the academy, and that's where we're losing people. If we had come out of civil service for hiring, we would be able to administer our own exams, our own tests for entry level, one, two, three, how many times a year we determine, we'd always have an active list, and on the day of the test, we could test people for their physical abilities to enter the academy, and the written test. So, we would know ahead of time who was ready for the academy, and we would be able to develop a list then, and we would save precious time and money and energy, and not lose people at the very end stage. When I talk to my colleagues who have left civil service, they're not having this problem. A civil service, police departments are. They are able to go to colleges, go to their social work departments, psychology, sociology, criminal justice departments, and recruit graduating seniors, because they don't have to be residents. They're able to recruit from college campuses, police officers on college campuses, who are already post-certified, and even larger hospital campuses in Boston. So, they're not seeing this problem, they're having exams, they're having 50 to 100 people come on the day of the exam to take the test, and they're able to hire qualified candidates and diversify their police departments. So, ultimately, I think it comes down to, I am responsible for making sure that everybody in the community is safe, and without police officers, I'm not able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief? All right, I'll open up to the board for any questions, comments, and motions.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Higgins.
I did have a conversation on the phone with the town manager and with the chief, and certainly understand all the points that have been made, and indicated I'm willing to vote for this to go to town meeting. However, when I see the comment, the draft comment that's attributed in there, that really, because I said, coming to town meeting as a town meeting member, I would vote against this. So, but since the comment says, for me, if I vote positive action on this, then I'm urging Town Meeting to do that, I won't be voting for it. And I'm going to say, tell you the reasons why. I understand everything the chief is saying, and just to segue in, I know a lot of cities and towns have joined or ascribed to the 30 by 30 program, and Arlington also is in that, which is by, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, by 2030, at least 30% of your workforce should be diverse. And I know the town of Lexington is really, I've been watching them and getting their updates, they're really excited that two of our female police officers are helping them get to their 30 by 30 by leaving Arlington. I think the problem that Arlington has, and not just with the police department, but also with Public Works, is we're not competitive in salary. We have two outstanding female police officers, and please, Mr. Town Manager, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, that did apply to Arlington, we did put them through the academy, invested them, and if they're not already in Lexington, they're going, and they're going to make $27,000 and $30,000 more. I think that's the issue with this, and where the comment, the way it's designed, it's saying, I'm endorsing this, which I wasn't, I said I'd be willing to vote for it to go to town meeting, which is the conversation I had with both people, and would vote no Because I think this is something Town Meeting should discuss and debate, I still wouldn't be in favor of it, just for the arguments given, which is, we need to attract more candidates, and I think, first and foremost, with, and I know I've said this before, I apologize for repeating, having seven and nine vacancies respectively in the Department of Public Works, and Paxton Field, and Highway, you know, for everything that we're doing, natural turf, or not, or anything else, it's not going to be maintained, and we're not even competitive with Stonem, which I believe their population is about 20-something thousand. So, I don't think the issue is getting people to apply for the police department, because like I said, we attracted two great female candidates, but once they get here and they see how vastly underpaid they are, I think that's going to continue. So, I just wanted to explain that I'm all for this debate at Town Meeting, I'm not in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
I appreciate your being straightforward and honest about that, and thank you very much. I would say, we do try to offer competitive salaries, there are some communities, like Lexington, that just have so much more wealth than we do, that it's hard to compete with them. We do have a Town Manager 12 where we've compared ourselves to, we think we're competitive with that, and we think we've put competitive wages out there. However, I'm not here tonight to debate our collective bargaining strategy. I would respectfully ask that the board do put this to Town Meeting, so we can have a debate there, where I think would be an appropriate place to have that debate, and let them decide. I do think, having worked in a town before that didn't have civil service, and seeing what it's like here, I do see how it holds us back, and I do respectfully request that Town Meeting be allowed to take up this issue. Thank you.
And could I just add, if the draft comment were that, the vote of the, and I'm not saying this has to happen, I didn't.
By, yeah.
If the vote was that the select board thinks this is an important issue, that is something that Town Meeting, certainly, if the town leaders need to hear the discussion at Town Meeting, and their subsequent vote on it, that sort of comment, then I could vote for it. But this is saying something different, so, thank you.
In my comments, when you take the chair, you have to speak last, but to Terry Heim, along the lines of what Mrs. Mahan just mentioned, can we just update the draft comments to say, because this is similar to the issue that we dealt with a couple of years ago, when we were taking the chief's position out of civil service, and we actually didn't vote to put it on the warrant, and then we circled back and we got it to the special town meeting, and I voted against it as a town meeting member. Or, I don't know, I don't remember if I was a town meeting member at the time, I don't want someone to call me out. But, I think for me, you know, I've spoken to a few people about this, and certainly see both sides of the issue, so I would like to be in a position where I just say, we're going to push it along to Town Meeting for a debate, and I'll go down there and wear my town meeting hat and decide where it is, where I land when we go to vote. So, can we just amend, I assume it's within our purview to amend what's in the draft comment?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. The comment can say whatever you want it to say. And I attempted to draft a comment that would allow you to say the select board urges positive action or no action, but clearly I didn't do a particularly good job of that. So, you can erase the whole comment, and just have the comment say, the board forwards this matter for Town Meeting's consideration. It's your comment, so you can have it read however you want.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything too dramatic in there, other than the word urge, and so I would just move it to the select board moves positive action, instead of in those two locations. But, again, I'll open up for additional comment from the board. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's going to Town Meeting anyway, it's just a matter of how it goes there, I mean, so it goes there with positive action for us, or no action, and so, I mean, I think everyone should vote how they feel, make a sentence, no, and so I think that's good information for Town Meeting to know, in the extent to which we are unanimous or not, we are already, maybe 2-2, maybe 3-1, you know, we'll see. So, it's going to Town Meeting, you know. I guess, I see no one in the room, so I'm not going to hear any comments from anyone else. Can someone tell me what the other side of the argument is for this?
Besides the civil service process itself, we're taking the test and things like that, the other thing is, one of the benefits of civil service is that if you have a police officer that wants to go to another city or town, who also is in civil service, the chief in Arlington can say, no, I can't afford to lose that officer, they have to stay here. Now, if the officer wants to go to a city or town, either that doesn't have civil service in Massachusetts, or is outside of Massachusetts, all that goes away. And I know I've been on this board a long time, that we've had police chiefs come in, not have civil service, we've taken it out, case in point, Chief Ryan, then when he came in, we gave him civil service status, for a whole abundance of reasons, which I'm not going to reiterate here, because I'm not going to get them correct, because I didn't do my homework on that. So, the town, in my opinion, definitely sees value in civil service, but I certainly understand the chief's plight, but, and there are other benefits that probably somebody from the union or someone else would tell you that civil service affords the town, I don't know that the town manager is going to want to do that, so I'll leave it at that. And I don't know if any of my colleagues want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, the conversations, it's separate issues, since they'll have civil service protections while they're on the force, and some of the benefits of civil service will be there in place anyways. I mean, I think, I was going to talk after, but I'm not going to go now. It's, civil service has been the way it's been, there's, I think that, there is still less, I think there's a few people that just recently took the test, and the question would be, where do they fall in the scheme of the hiring, I think? And then I think some conversations shift to what's not really the meat of this article is not, let's not have a hiring problem, hiring issue because let's retain our talent, and that is definitely an important conversation to have. Gets frustrating, to me at least, that every year after year, we seem, our bargaining seems to go into arbitration, that we can't work with our officers. I understand, and I've had conversations with people about the limitations that Arlington has, I think they're having seen conversations at the school committee level with teachers in pay relative to some of the neighboring cities and towns, and it's the same, we have this conversation in many different forms, with lack of ability to create new growth and the limitations of proposition two and a half, and that is a real aspect of the discussion. But, I think, for something like this, some of the officers definitely want to, want to see some movements in the way that the town negotiates with unions, and, you know, it's a tough, we don't step into the role of collective bargaining, we've been chewed back by a couple of town managers now, when they do, but, you know, I think that's one of the, one of the arguments that you will hear from officers, is, you know, let's not just look at how we hire to replace, it's, you know, you're kind of making an officer that's been with the town for 20 years expendable, but we can pull somebody back in pretty simply if we pass this legislation. But again, it's not, everyone understands that there is an issue with hiring police officers in civil service, we, I think, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'd heard one time, the chief was trying to hire five people, five people applied, and one person got through the academy, and so now we're having issues as people retire, people leave, where detectives are getting pulled back into uniform, and it's just not, we definitely need to find a solution. So, I, you know, I, I always get weary with issues like with this, but I think it's something that I'll vote for, to move on to Town Meeting for the discussion, and, you know, we'll see what happens. At the state, we don't, I'm not sure, Mr. Town Manager, do you know if this is passed in any other jurisdictions, or is this a novel idea from the state to review?
It's a somewhat novel idea, the city of Attleboro put forward a similar proposal. I will say, for the last two years that I know of, there have been several petitions for towns to move out of civil service entirely, none of which have moved in the state house. So, I will not pretend that if this passes Town Meeting, and we send it to them, that it's a done deal. It's a complicated issue up on Beacon Hill, involving multiple unions, particularly the fire union, which is dead set against any changes, the police may be a little less so, but it's, so on Beacon Hill, it's just a difficult situation, but I think this at least would send a little message to our senators, legislators, and the legislative leadership, that something needs to be done.
Is there any more comments, sir?
This is 714, so, so I understand, I mean, that with civil service, that you had at one point, I mean, 300 people applying, and now, I mean, very few, I mean, is that even across the board with non-civil service?
If I may, Mr. Chair. Yes. In, there are communities, Burlington just got out of civil service, for example, they get 100 people applying, I think the last time they opened up a job application there, and I know when I was back in Amherst, we had plenty of people applying. So, the non-civil service communities have much better luck, and it makes it much easier for them to get, attract people to apply for jobs in their towns.
I understand, but my question was, though, is the trend going down for them also?
Yes, there are more communities getting out of, or trying to get out of, civil service than staying, there aren't people moving into civil service at this point.
Sorry, so, I think what Mr. Higgins is asking is, of the, so, you know, I talked to somebody, I think Burlington had 200 applications when they opened it up, if they opened it up today, would they have 200 applications, or is the trend that people in general are less likely to apply for police officer positions?
I think the trend in general is that it is harder to hire people in police positions. I think that's all across the country, frankly. I think that's all across the country, frankly. I mean, I read articles about that. So in that regard, I think we're trying to have a multitasked position of taking away as many obstacles as we can to hiring. I think civil service is an obstacle, we need to get rid of that. You know, without, again, without getting into particulars of collective bargaining, I think we try to, we're trying to put things out that would be favorable to the unions and favorable to being able to hire and retain people. So it's a multifaceted approach.
So you know what I ask, because I mean, if the problem is getting more people to apply, I just want to know whether or not this is a solution to it. I mean, I'm supporting it for other reasons. One, you know, is because it was a recommendation, you know, from the equity audit and I understood the rationale for that and I support it. You know, on those side of it, I do understand the value in having people from a community, at least in the community, you know, but in a community that has our own composition, which is historically based, I mean, the only way to get more diversity pretty much is to, you know, bring it from, from, from outside. It's a difficult state, though, I mean, and so, so you take it from, you take it from someplace else, they have less, you know, and so, but like I said, I think the equity audit, I like the reasons for that. I understood those reasons. And then, of course, there is the chief of police who is, is supporting us and I, I, I'm just going to give that a lot of weight, you know, just as I would if it were going in the opposite direction, it'd be really hard for me to go against unless I had, unless I had some compelling reason to, and I don't, you know, but I would urge my colleagues, I mean, respect to report, you know, because once again, it's going to town meeting and I think it's important at town meeting to know if you don't support it and not to say you support it just to get it to town meeting because it's going there anyways. So I think it's important if you don't, that you let people know that you don't and why you don't so that they have more information to make a decision. So that's it, thank you.
If I may, this is the vote on sending it to town meeting. At town meeting, members have the ability to express themselves at that point in the debate. So I would respectfully take a different position from what you've just articulated, Mr. Diggin's, because I think the vote tonight is whether to give town opportunity, town meeting the opportunity to take up the issue.
Well, thank you for that. I misunderstood. And so I just assumed that it was, it was going, it was just a matter of whether we voted positive action on, on town meeting to take it up or not. So I clearly misunderstood. I'm sorry for that. I withdraw my advice, you know, and so now I, I'm still going to support the answer to town meeting. So I understand, I understand why you're always saying, taking the position you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Yeah, just a follow-up question and I'm aware of the Attleboro, I believe this, this actually is almost identical to what is currently pending at the legislature for the city of Attleboro. Is that the first time Attleboro has attempted to do this or have they done it in a prior session and it wasn't approved?
I believe, I believe.
Okay. All right. Just curiosity, I know it's pending in the current session. And again, just to be clear, if, if an individual is hired after the 12 months, that, that police officer is considered a civil service police officer? Okay. Yeah, I, there's a lot of issues here in terms of civil service, what happens with the civil service program and whether there's an opt-out later on or whether there, there isn't challenges in terms of flexibility, both for officers and for communities. And I think based on what the, the chief has said tonight, I'm willing to support this for hiring purposes because clearly there are challenges here. I will say, there are a number of other issues, Mrs. Mahan referred to them. I think, I think those go beyond what's being attempted here, but they certainly are very important and certainly things that, that need to be addressed as, as we go forward. And I think for purposes of the town meeting discussion, I think it would be important just to try to distinguish presently what's happening with civil service communities, non-civil service communities. Because I know just in general, I think earlier this year that the commissioner of the city of Boston Police Department sent letters to the Mass Chiefs Association saying, we can't hire police officers either. So there are major issues here in terms of hiring, but I think for, for this limited purpose, I'd be willing to go along and support it.
Thank you. Yeah, and I guess just to wrap up our discussion before we do a public comment, I'd say this sort of touches on what Mrs. Mahan was saying and leads into Mr. Diggin's question, is this, are we going to see 200 applicants? Probably not, because there's a whole host of figures, including what does it pay? How are, what's the reception and how are the officers treated? And it, that's, I think that's a separate issue that we need to continue to work on to make sure that we're taking care of our police department and we're attracting new members and we're retaining our current members because there's certainly a lot of value in institutional knowledge of officers that have been in the town for a long time. So I think there are, again, I'll support this to send this to town meeting, wear my town meeting hat down there when I vote. But it's a continued, I think there is a continued discussion that we're going to have beyond just the hiring because we don't want to go through, even if we're hiring out of civil service, we, I don't think the chief wants to, wants to take up all her time hiring where there's constant turnover. So I will support this at this hearing. I will likely support it at town meeting and, but again, I want to continue to have those conversations to make sure that our officers are being treated fairly and they're being paid what they should, within the limits of what the town can provide and certainly from resident perspective, town perspective, from us, that the officers are getting the respect they deserve for the work that they do. So.
Mr. Hurd, I could just say one more thing. And because this was on a special town meeting warrant, there wasn't a long time between when it was published and when we had the hearing, there's nobody in line who, or nobody here who was speaking to this, but I, I mean, I think given the short timeframe, if there are people out there who have concerns that think that we should be aware of the concerns, I would encourage them to contact us and let those concerns know or let reasons that they're in favor of it be known too before we go to the special town meeting because I think the limited time may or may not have affected that. But I mean, I think it helps us, all of us get as much information as we can.
I suspect there may be some folks that have comments.
Quick question, because it's been raised a lot. I'm not getting any disconnect about me, but through you, Mr. Chair, if the town manager or the human resources director, I think I know 10, but, and I think when I put up Public Works in Police on the Arlington 12, we're very near the bottom. Could you quickly list out as close as you can who the Arlington 12 communities? I understand for like town manager and M schedule employees, we're at the top. I understand for like teachers, we're at the bottom at like 68% and police officers are like 72%. But could you list the Arlington 12 or come close to it?
Needham, Belmont, Stonem.
Belmont, Rockland, Redding, Valros, Milton, David, Needham, North Annova, Redding, Stonem, Water Town, and Rochester.
Okay. So I reiterate again that Stonem is paying better than Arlington is for town jobs. So anyways.
Thank you.
And with that, this is a public, this is a public hearing. We'll first go to anyone in the room that would like to speak. And is there anyone on Zoom?
Seeing no answers.
That will lose the public hearing portion. Mr. Diggin?
So I'm reading the text of the article and it says, to see if the town will vote to authorize and request the select board to petition the Mass General Court to exempt the town of Arlington from provisions. So it doesn't seem to me like we're voting on whether to send this to town meeting.
Mr. Heim?
May I clarify? Mr. Diggin, the period? I think what the discourse here is, is is the select board through its comment, really just the comment, articulate the position that it supports and wants town meeting to take a certain action or that it just wants town meeting to talk about it and take a vote. So for example, in the draft comment, it just sort of says, select board moves, insert position action. So what I intended there was positive action, negative action, whatever it was. But you could also draft something that means like, the select board forwards this article for the purposes of town meetings discussion and then close it out with the balance, the board does not take a substantive position on this article, but advances it to town meeting for its collective discourse in general. So I think what your colleagues are talking about, from my perspective at least, what I'm hearing, is that the part of the discussion is, are we voting on this and saying, town meeting, please do this? Or are we voting on this because if we don't vote on it, the default motion is no action before town meeting, it would need either a substantive motion or something like that to be before you. Do I have that correct?
Yeah. Where I'm confused a little bit, I think, Mr. Diggin's in the same place, I thought you put words in.
Oh, please, please.
Is my recollection for the last time we put initially this for special town meeting is that we have to vote to, put it, send it to town meeting, correct? The special town meeting is only articles that the select board votes to put before town meeting?
No, Mr. Vice Chair. These articles are on the special town meeting warrant. You're voting whether or not you're going to have a positive action motion or if there's a no action, that is the default action before town meeting. And maybe, maybe I understand what you're doing. So all special legislation, any special legislation we ever submit of any kind has that same preamble. It's town meeting, will you authorize the select board? Because the select board always files special legislation through our legislative delegation.
So we're back to where I thought we were because we, Mr. Town Manager said that we're voting whether or not to even send this to town meeting. And my statement is that, I mean, this is going to town meeting, it's just a matter of whether it goes there with no action or positive action.
If I may, Mr. Diggin's, if there's no positive action, someone would have to submit a substantive motion. A town meeting member could do that, but they're not guaranteed to do that because this was inserted in the request of the manager. The manager cannot submit a substantive motion of his own volition, only a town meeting member can do that.
I understand. Got you. And so, yeah, that's how it is with any article.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so, so, I understand. And I guess what I was getting, never mind. I could go on, we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you're hearing that it would get.
So before you all take a vote, I just want to make sure I understand from a comment perspective, and again, the comment can read however you want, it's your motion, whether or not you want this draft comment to just be, we urge positive action, or you want it to be the slightly more tamped down version that I just sort of articulated where you're forwarding it to town meeting for discussion and/or you're saying you don't take a substantive position, but you're advancing it for town meetings discourse in general.
I can, I'll confirm with Mrs. Mahan concerning, talk on this. I just think if it says, the select board moves positive action, which is what we're doing, I think we sometimes give ourselves a little more influence over the way town meeting votes than we have. So we're spending time a little bit on semantics, but I, where it says urges, kind of like we're really pushing this, whereas some of us are, you know, we might urge something that we ultimately vote against. So I would, and again, Mrs. Mahan can comment on this, but I just think if it says we move positive action, I don't think it's going to sway the town meeting one way or another, but it's a little more aligned than what you're hearing from the board, Mrs. Mahan.
I agree with that, but I want to wait to see, I don't know if there's a motion yet, but I would be interested in if the motion is what Mr. Hurd said, select board moves positive action to go to town meeting, or, which is within the purview of my colleagues, if the motion is the select board moves positive action and requests urges, whatever word you want to use. So, and I don't know, is there a motion? I don't think there's a motion yet. So, but, so it's whatever, whoever wants to make the motion. If you want to just make the motion to move positive action to send this to town meeting, that's something I can vote for. But if you feel so inclined that, no, I want to, I want to go the whole 100%, then that would be your motion and I would not vote for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to make the motion?
No. Because don't even get me started with the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hello?
I, I, I think there's a range of where people are, but I think for the purposes of having a four to zero vote, I think, based on what Mr. Hurd said and what I'd be comfortable with is in the first sentence, select board moved positive action on this article and I'd strike the last sentence of the comment and leave everything else in there. And I don't know if that's comfortable with the other members and then to the extent that people have more comments that they want to give as individuals, they can do it at town meeting, but I mean, I think it, you, I'm going to move positive action on this, on this article and just leave it at that.
And if I could say to that, if the first sentence, as Mr. DeCoursey says, if the second sentence, I don't agree with that and everything else would be fine. The summation of Mass General Law, Chapter 31. So I don't know how strongly people fear about that, where it says, in short, sets forth many criteria, you know.
I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing, I'm not agreeing, I'm just trying to.
I'm just asking if we could take out.
Take out the sentence that says in short.
Yeah. And then leave everything else where it says, the proposal before the board is to remove civil service requirements and da, 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 da.
I'll try that. And Mr. DeCoursey, I think I made the motion that I was going to make because I do really want to reflect the sentiments of the board here now, you know? So, but, Mr. DeCoursey's eyebrows are fur, I feel, so I was like, I want to like wake the town, basically.
See, and the thing is, we're in the unique position that we already have our draft comment before us, before we've even voted. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't be in this vote right now. So please don't anyone, which I don't feel that anyone is doing that, to take that into account. So if you could kind of wipe that, you know, because I mean, I could go on for another 20 minutes, but you don't want me to to disagree with that second sentence, but I'm not going to go there.
My only concern in the comment is we have Chapter 31 in the vote. I think Chapter 31 has to be identified as what it is in the comment. And if you don't agree with the full sentence, that's fine, but I mean, I think somewhere you have to identify what Chapter 31 is in the comment and what's happening here. Just as a matter of fact.
That's fine.
It's in section one.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, no, no, it says that it's Chapter 31. The general law system says that's a civil service provision. Sorry, that's all.
If you'd like to proceed in this manner, it could read, the select board moves positive action on this article for the purposes of town meetings discussion, or it just moves positive action on this article. The proposal before the select board is to remove civil services, parentheses, general law, Chapter 31, requirements and criteria with respect to new hires under the flexible criteria set forth in the special legislation above, does not otherwise propose to affect civil services processes, conditions, or rights to restrict employment, promotion, et cetera, of police officers or any other services. And that's just the end.
Yeah, I, the only thing on that is, is what I moved is we moved favorable action and then, again, individually, I think the concern was with the word urges. So I, for me, I don't really need the full purposes after that. I think that's up to the individuals down at town meeting if they're opposed to it as town meeting members.
So, I mean, do we want to simplify this and just says, the select board moves positive action on the article?
Yeah.
And leave it at that?
Yes. Uh-oh. Backspace, backspace. Delete, 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 delete.
Plenty of discussion. But I did want to say that was very good on the spot editing, Terry Heim. That was almost Dan Dunn-esque.
So to sort of clear, right now, the proposal would be, the select board moves positive action on this article.
Yes. Sorry for all the time you spent on that.
No, no, no. Of course.
It was a very well written comment before.
It's your, it's your comment, that's what it should reflect, not mine.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, so we have a motion for positive action from Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Diggin's. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That is a four to zero vote with Mr. Helmuth recusing himself. We have, that move brings us on to correspondence received.
Move receive.
With online ADA compliance report from Joan Roman, we have a motion to receive. We have a second. We have a motion to receive. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion received from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Decorsi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? We have new business.
New business, thank you.
Turney Hine?
No new business.
Mr. Hua?
I would just mention, I would, I'd sent you an email that there is something on YouTube now. You have a link to it. You might just wanna take a look.
Mrs. Mahan?
I wasn't gonna have new business, but to that end, I do wanna thank the select board's office. I have not reviewed the whole 48 minutes, but I did go to, um, the, uh, encounter in the select board's office, and, um, I did call Ms. Mahan and ask her to pass along my congratulations for the exemplary way that they performed as they do every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
No new business.
Mr. Decorsi?
No new business.
And I would just, I guess, I only saw the first meeting. The manager handled himself very well, uh, so, it is entertaining. Mrs. Mahan?
Uh, I'd like to move that the select board adjourn and reconvene down at Arlington's regular town meeting, and that we remain in session throughout the course of the annual town meeting, and that our adjournment of the select board will be at the annual town meeting will be concurrent with the adjournment of town meeting at the annual town meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And I just said that so many times, because when we go into the special, we'll have the same vote. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why we never call on anyone else to make that motion. We have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded, seconded by Mr. Higgins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Four to zero vote. No recusing.
Yes.